Katturidhiyaparishutthanaamathukumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Adiyagumum irandamadigaram 11:12
Genesis chapter 2 verse 11 and 12 The name of the first is Paesum that is it which compassed the whole land of Avila where there is gold and the gold of that land is good there is bilyum and onyx too Mudalam aathukku Paesun injupir adha Avila Desam uduvadayum sutti odum avidathile pon vilayum andhadeesatine pon nalathu avidathile pitolagum koemidakallum undu
Katturidhiyaparishutthanaamathukumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Pon vilayum
And the gold cometh out
Pon vilayum oru edamirukkaraadu adhu dan Avila Des
And there is gold and the land is called as Avila
Edhin thottathile oru nadi porapputte naalu arugalaga perindadu
A river went out of Eden water garden and it was parted into four heads
Andhathothathu selikku vikumudiyaga desathu selikku vikumudiyaga devan yerdipadithina andhathadi
And these are the river that has made the land fertile and to be the prosperity of that land
Adhu naalu divisionaga naalu pagriya agupriigaradu
It was parted and became into four heads
Adhalo oru nadi modal nadi Paesun
And the first is called as Paesum
Andhapaesun Avila yengra desathai sutti pogaradu
And it compassed the whole land of Avila
Appidipoogumbodhu andhathathile maramo chediyo kodiyoyo ilavata polathathuludana yendavidumana kusikkakoodiya evigalo vilayikaradala pon vilayikaradindru Bible choligare
So the Bible says that where the land is Paesun is flowing and where the plants or trees are not growing and that is the land where the gold cometh out
Naminnikidhapponne kudithu oralavu vilangikolala
And today let us all understand a little bit about this gold today
Onnamudiyavalkaila edhu edhulaa irundhalu illadaaloo pon avasiyam
In our life or whatever may be there or not but gold is very essential
Polathinadugal indhatangathai tannudiyadhaaramaga ilavatal tannudiyamadhipaga ilavatal tannudiyanaathinudiyabokisha mahavikrathu
The worldly people or the country of the people and what they are doing and they are making this gold as a symbol or they taking it as a treasure or precious meat of them
Ananal nam yelithin prakaramanaponnukku edangudukkaraadu la Avikuriyaponnakiyavishuvasathukke namukkayathu vakkudukkara
We are not going to give important for the little gold but we are going to give important for the gold in spiritual way
Ile kudithi nam mudalampedhiru mudalamadigara yala vasanathile indha alindhubogarappon ilavatal visuvasam ivigale kuditha varthee nam parkala
In 1 Peter chapter 1 verse 7 and we can read about the gold which perishes and the gold which is trying with fire Alindhubogarappon akkinene naale sodikappadum adhe parkidum adige vilayire pichada idukkare ungal visuvasam sodikappadu Eesukristu velipadambodu ungalukkupugulchiyum ganna mom maghimayum undaga kaanappadum
Appo indha pon yelithin prakaramanapon Avikuriyaponnindra alakumbodhu adhu visuvasathai kaanvikaradu
The little gold when it is called in a certain manner in a spiritual manner it shows our faith
Nam sabayile ilavatal Avikuriyavalkaila ennannakariyengale velaviitthaloo adavada mukkayamanaadu pon vilayakkoodiyadu avasiyam
In the church or in a spiritual manner when we are thinking about and the very important aspect is that gold is cometh out
Oru Avikuriyamanishanandhichunna avanukku payar visuvas
When we are calling a spiritual man and he is called as a believer
Namadaa uuliyar visuvasinida renda pichu vichu vichu
So we are divided into servants of God and believers
Oru administration kaga pichu vichu mari vichu
And we are patterned for administration
Anayesu apdii uuliyakaranga visuvasini piri geladu
But Jesus did not separate as a servant of God and believers
Pedhur orunal nan kadallinandhavartumaa abhini esuttakakara
And Jesus asked, Peter asked to Jesus can I walk in the waters
Apayesu nadandhavangra
And Jesus said you walk on the water
Apavun nadandhavonabodhu thirinnumulgaradu
So when he was walking on the water he started to sink down
Apayesu avanukku kayguduthu avan kattanodanayesu avanukku kaygudukkara
And when he was shouting and Jesus gave his hands
Apayesu enna sonnara
Jesus said
Pradhana apostolani abhinarara
Did he called him the chief apostle
Enna sonnara
What he said to him
Arpa visuvasienna
And he is knowing of believers
Adhey pola kavaleppadukkara janangalipathu avan enna sonnara
And looking under the people that they are carrying what he is telling
Arpa visuvasigaleenna sonnara
And he was telling that and he that are believers
Kaatupullukooduthuvikrude devan ungaliboshikamattara uddhivikamattara
And he that was flourishing the fine trees and cannot flourish you
Apayidhan enna valingikondra namayallarmee visuvasigaltha
And what do we understand from this and we are all believers
Visuvasigal modarpalanke
And we the believers or the first fruit
Indha visuvasigal modarpalankelarindhu uuliyargal veliyavarambudhu adhu ku payar Bible cholirke modarpalankalil modarpalan
The believers they are the first fruit if the servant of God when they are coming up to the believers and they are the first fruit of the first fruit
Ilavatal visuvasigal daaniyav
Or the believers and they are the corn
Avangala onavamathala
And these grain can be turned into food
Anau uuliyargal daaniyama maramattanga vedayam maruva
And but these servants of God will not be turned into grain but they are turned into seed
Allam modarpalan
And they are the first fruits
Adhalu ulandha first idhaidhukondundhu vedayamathumbodhu inno aneyakani galai adukkoduk
Taking the first fruit out of the grain and it is making many seeds and these will turn into many seeds in turn
Katturidhiyaparishutthanaamathukumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Anadavisuvasigal uuliyargalindra vityasamala visuvasigal uuliyargal rendu me ilavatal puriyarushalem siyon engbodhu rendu me aandavuridey rendu kankalpola
And there is no difference of the believers and servants of God and new Jerusalem and Zion unlike the two eyes of God
Onnadapattla ningapadikumbodhu
When you see in Song of Solomon
Manavatiyai Solamittiyantra alakkaradu
And the Lord is calling the bride as Solomite
Onnadapattu aru parimundru kadaesi pagriyaparkumbodhu
When we look into chapter 6 verse 13 last part of Song of Solomon Solamittiyil ningal ennatthi parkriirkal aval iranduseenainkutthuthukisamana manavell
Aval irandu iranduseenai
And two armies
Uuliyargal oru seenai visuvasigal oru seenai
Servant of God they are an army and the believers they are another army
Katturidhiyaparishutthanaamathukumai mundaavada
May the God's holy name be glorified
Nammasubjectukvaruva
It has come to the subject today
Endhathil pon vilayid
In which place the gold comes
Ah visuvasingra payar mukkayamala
The believer name is not an important
Omudiyavishuvasam vilayenno adavadu mudichya adayan
Our faith must grow or it must attain the maturity
Visuvasathukka vallachu undu
There is growth for faith
Visuvasathukku oru mudichu undu ilavatal purunamindru namadha alakal
And we can tell that there is maturity or perfection for this faith
Appo yenndhatthala visuvasavilayidho angapovarattangal undu
And where the faith grows and there are strides
Ananalatham visuvasavalkikke namvovarattathai palathangalaparku
So we can see the conflicts in many parts in the life of faith
Innik aneyakeethangalav visuvasigal visuvasapovarattathalani kammudiyamathadum arugaradu
Today many believers and they are not able to stand the struggle of faith and they were stumbling in their life
Pisas enna pannuvaa
And what the devil do
Nisa eh saadhana visuvasiaga irukumbodhu prachinakadayadu
If you are an ordinary believer there is no problem
Visuvasi saadhana visuvasiaga payaralavila visuvasiarukkumodhu indha prachinigal kadayadu
If the believer he was an ordinary believer or namesick believer and there is no problem to him
Appa pisas onnu oru pannamattam
And the devil cannot harm you
Anavishuvasavilayumbodhu adhu adavulla varuva
But when the faith grows or when it was furtling and he comes inside
Adhu koru example choligare
I tell you one example
Nyayadipadigal aaramadigaratthi parkumbodhu
When we look on the book of Judges chapter 6
Avang enna pannuvaga
And what they do
Pisasintandramenna
And what is the craftiness of devil
Nyayadipadigal aru mundru naan
Judges chapter 6 verse 3 and 4 Isreveler videngvitethirukkambodhu mediyaniyaram amalekierum kilakkathiputtrurum avergalukke veerudama edumbivandhu avergalukke edhri paalayamirangi kasavin ellaimattum nilathin velichilai keduthu isrevelile aagaharathy aagilum adumadugal kalidigalay aagilum vaykadi povargal
Adavadu velichchala than karakta kedukvaruva
So first he will come and to destroy and this fertility
Chedi mulakimodhu varamatta
When it is growing he will not come
Pookumbodhu varamatta
And when it is flowering it will not come
Kaikumbodhu varamatta
And when it is wearing fruits it will not come
Adham mudichya adairathayathla yarvandruva Eva vandruva
But when it is attaining the perfection or maturity he comes
Ah ana Avila desathala uladana pon nalathu
But the gold which is found in the land of Avila is good
Andhapaesun nadi oodukkara andhathadi karaila indhapon vilayikaradu
The bank of the river of Paesum this gold flourishes
Edhenikudithi nam parkumbodhu
When we read about Eden
Edhinindhichunnaal katturidhiyathotham
Eden means it is a garden of God
Oru manidinudiyay oru visuvasi oru uuliyanudiyavishuvasom vallachya adikaradu velichchala adikaradu mudichya adikaradu na adhu katturidhiyathothathaladu nadak
So when in the life of the faith of this believer or servant of God is grows it matures it gets perfection it is found only in the land of Avila
Sabaydhan katturidhiyathotham
And church is the garden of God
Indhakatturidhiyathothathalirukumbodhu adhu onakkula andhavelichchal unda
When you are found at the garden of God and this fertility takes place
Ennaladu devundhiyathotham indra alakappadukkara
Because it is called as the god of God
Angedhadan devadoodhurili modalavaitupathar
And there he places the angel of God in the
Ahavga adav onumilamakidanga
And there were spoiled them
Adhitmanishanakunduva angavakiradu
Then he placed men in the garden
Angammanishanyayavavandhu keduthu uttupoida
And he corrupted the men too
Eh kudithila namayallarallathangali parkamudiy
And this we can see in different places
Edhin indhichunnaal katturidhiyathotham ilavatal nerthiyana edam ilavatal dirpti kudukkakoodiya edam ilavatal devanukke priyamana edam indra alakappadukkara
When we call about Eden and it is the place where it is the pleasant place or the place which gives us satisfaction or it is the plain is which gives delight to God or is God's garden
Sabayyandhavadu alagana oru edam
Church is a beautiful place
Sabayyandhavadu oru devanudiyapulliyay dirptiyakkakoodiya oru edam
Church is the place which satisfies the people of God
Darsabayinmele devan priyamkolukkara
And God is so pleased upon the church
Irayanan virumbinabadinal inge nan basam pannuvay
I desire on this so I dwell in the church
Indhasabayae selippavikkarakaka kattar oru nadiyavanduvaradu
So to make this church fertile or prosperous and he is bringing a river
Idha sangirakaran chollumbodhu
When the psalmist is telling about this
Oru nadi undu
There is a river
Adhin neerkalgal unnadamana orudiyanagarathai sandoshipikyun
And the channels will go and flourish the life of the heaven
Indhanadiyinadhiyunudiyaspesalityenna
What is the specialty of this river
Adhu unnadamana orudiyanagarathai sandoshipikukkoodi
And it is able to make the flourish of the city of the heaven
46:4 of Song
Oru nadi undu adineerkalgal devanudiyanagarathayum unnadamana var vasabannu parishutthasthalathayum sandosipikkum
Parishutthasthalathai sandoshipikakadaaga sabayae sandoshipikakadaaga ponni vilayavikkumudiyaga parishutthaviyana var oru nadiaga sabaykullavadukkara
The spirit of God is rushing like a river in the church to make the place a gland with the tappanuckles and the city of God and the church God
Ile kudithi ningal esekielaparkumbodhu
When we read about this in book of Ezekiel
Ilavatal velipadatal 22 madigaratthala parkumbodhu
Or when you read about this revelation chapter 22
Singasanthalirundhu porapputta oru nadiyay modalvasanathale parkala
And we can see in the first verse and the thing which has come out of the throne or river that flourish of the throne Pinbu palingayipoon telivana jiva tanirulasutthamana nadi devanum aattukuttiyanavaramidukkare singasanthilirundhu porapputta varugaradu enakkakkaanpitaan
Ible nadihale kudithi ningal palathangalaparkala
So we can read about river in many places
Esekielasolabattan nadi poorathangal allarokey unda
The place which is mentioned on the book of Ezekiel is the river which gives a healing to the people 47:1 Sambavi pathi ennavindral indhanadi pogumidamengkum sanjerikum jiva pranigal yaavum pilaykum Indhatanirangivandapadinaal vigi eyeralamana machangalum undayirukum indhanadi pogumidamengkumulla yaavum aarokey patthupilaykum
Indhparishutthaviyinkran nadiyay sabaykudevan oru eevagukuduthukkara
The Lord is giving us a gift as a Holy Spirit river to the church
Eppidipida tannudiyakumarne kuduthaarav
How father gave his son
Eppidi kumarantan jeevanikuduthaarav
And how son gave life
Adubola aviyanavar tannayay marathu namakkulla ovukudukkara
Likewise the spirit of God hiding himself is submitting himself into us
Nam choldradu ningal alla kavaniyadu
Listen carefully what I say
Ida tann kumarne kuduthu ivlavaai ulakathil anbu kurundhar
And father gave his son his love is not this much
Kumaran tann jeevanikuduthu namil anbu kurundhar
And son gave his life and he loved this much
Aviyana enna seeradu
And what the spirit of God is doing
Eesu 33 orsho indhulakathalirukkara 33 oray varudangal
And Jesus was in this world for 33 and half years
Anaparishutthaviyana var yendrunnumakkulla rukkara
But the Holy Spirit is dwelling in this forever and ever
Parlavathukkani ningal poniigandsonna
When you go to heaven
Vidava pakala
You can see father
Kumaranay pakala
You can see son
Yara pakumdiyadu
But you cannot see who
Apav engabidharu
Where he was
Engagirukkara
And where he went
Namakkulla rukkara
And he is with us
Angenan poneen pidavikandeen attukuttiyanavikandeen mahmiyakandeen pidavikandeen abhilan choliyukku yara kandennarukkada Solanga Henavari engagirakare nammalamathi avarkopaykunduvi indipaduyuchirukkara
And we can see that and I see father and see son but you cannot see the Holy Spirit because he transformed us like him and he changed and compared to glory
Avartannay marakkaradu
He hid himself
Engamarakkaradu
Where he was hiding
Namakkulla pooy marathikaradu
And he comes inside and hides himself
Avarulla vara vara tha avarudiyagunalangal namakkulla veliyavadukkara
When he comes inside and all the things of him is coming out of us
Indhedhin thottathile
In this hidden garden
Indhmodal nadi porappudukkara
This first river first see the thought
Ninga Bible padichupadino naalu nadi naalu arugalpoogum adapathina var subjetad
So when you see in the Bible it is divided into four river heads it is another subject
Appanandhav andhannam modalnadiyavohavikkardukke first reason eh edhukvilayenno pon vilayenno Abhina indhavishinda Avikuriyapathile modalmodal velichchali edhuthava visuvas
The reason for the first river to flow is that the reason is to making the gold to pass it is and we need faith in our life
Visuvasam illamal devanukke priyamayurupadu kodada kari
And without faith it is impossible to be desired to God
Visuvasikravantha padaran
And he that having faith will not haste
Oru manijandhichunnaan visuvasiaga thirundhal enna seeravai kettupoyirupai
One man sees that if I was not believing I would have corrupted
Appoyidhan enna valingikondra modal nadi poradu visuvasathavilayavikkara
So what we are remembering or telling about this that and the first river flowed opposed it out to give us faith
Adhumatharamala andhadesathroodiyapon nalathu
And not only that and the gold land of that country is good for us
Alak qualityana andhathangal
And it is the qualified gold
Eva kolarla gudue edukkarananga
Even they are taking gold out of kola
Ah adu vandhu manakkulla kadaakadu
So this also presents of gold
Alayarchi aduthu kondu vandhu adu oru valiyayi veliyavanduvar
And taking and refining the gold and they will do on many processes
Oru urle asari asari maranadu thangasari kangelaya avangatthiruuk
So in place and they will tell that the gold finer and they will refine the gold
Avangatthiruulavodukkara chaakkada tanni urkveliyavarathukvaradu
So and the ditch water that is coming out of the roads it is coming into the city
Adha angirukkande thiru andhathirulavarundhavarrachaakkada engvaradu Abhia veliyavaru urkveliyavaradu
The street which is found in the other place but the ditch water coming out of it is
Anga oru kootavukaande andhathanneye sutthamani kadee erkara
And one group of people
Eva vittla kalyavutthadu gavaramalamu vottadu idhede karkaradu no oru business idhuno oru team irukku ipumun jenjithirukka saatangulathalaponigana ipapakala
And one group of people in Saturn Kulum and they are also refining or they are purifying the ditch water which is coming out of the house and to recover gold out of it even today they are doing this process And that is their business
Ippudiyum varshakakasindhiyutraga
And they were doing this business for years together
Anay naasoldrapponni ippri sakkadeela varudhalaa nadiyilaparishutthaviyavilavilayavivisuvas
But the gold which I am telling is not coming out of the ditch or garbage it comes out of the river
Avaravara varavavivisuvasavilanjii adhi pusuthapponna maru
When the anointing comes and your faith will refine and will become your pure gold
Yoobuku bangaramana sawdanay
And there was a great trial for John
Ava enna arikida
And what he confessed
Nan sodikappadapindu Huh nan ponnay vilangal
And when I was tried and I will become pure gold
Adavadu visuvasam parishodikkeputte adhu ponnaga maravait
Our gold must our faith must be tested and it was turned into gold
Adhivada vilayarepetta visuvasam sodikkeputte unakkay aliyadan nittiyaganamukimi unakkukudukkara
And the precious faith which is being tried out and which gives you the comparative glory of a general weight
Paesun nadingradu adapathibible choligaradu tadaintri odakoodiyorunadi
And the Paesun river is the river which goes without any hindrance
Free flowing abhinne English choliyukka
So it is said as free flowing river
Adavadu rendhemi shavil naramo thiripitappun stakkaido appidilakadayadu
So it will not stuck in a different way or in between
Oru chinnaprachinano neetakunindra
If a small problem and they miss it suddenly
Adu vandhu flow freeyavandukkadee erukunga abhishek
And it froze very freely the anointing comes freely
Andhapaesun nadi Avila desathai sutti odum
And that river Paesum compares it around the land of Avila
Avila angradu vattavadivam circularunna arto
And Avila means it is circular or circle
Abhina enna arto
And what does it mean
Visuvasathathovakaravara varadam mudikaravara varad
And he is the one he is the beginning or ending of the faith and author and finisher of faith
Devan airpanindu ondhal ningidapakala
You can see in Hebrews chapter 12 verse 1
Visuvasathathovakaravaru mudikaravaru maagiyavavayen okiporumayodu oodungal
And he the beginning of the author and finisher of faith look unto him and run patiently
Analai indhanatkalila namudiyapon vilayavendu
So in these days our goal must flourish out
Onudiyaponne pathu kattar solonan nalathu abhin solon
And looking onto your goal the Lord must say it is good
Na oru urle endupudhu oru edavangaradukaka naangalara rambaprayasapattu
When I ministered in one place and we took many labor to get a land
Appandhanjanangal evadu ovakaniyavudukthaa
And the people offered many offerings
Saadhana kaniyakallala
And not an ordinary offerings
Panathakuduthavungarukkara
And there are many have given money
Thangathakuduthavungarukkara
And they that have given gold
Edathavithukuduthavungarukkara
And they sold the land and gave money
Vellipathrungal palayapathrungal kuduthavungar
And they gave many vessels of silver
Orisalar palayya patthupodaveelagundukudukthaa
And some they have given the old silk saris
Adhu alulandhaadu jarigayavandi enna rate poochidhal Andhathatthupadukkari
And the jury of the sari is also costly and they give the
Appo indhatangathalangunudundhu pathavodhu pathigana andhakadutha andhapalayya periyapana karanay vittukulla enno chiduka Lockarachinduka indhalakarabankalakarula vittukulla taraila podichu chiduka chowthulapodichu chiduka
And they digged in the ground and they have made many glow goals in their houses
Oru vittla avangasunaga yengappa rambasalavilicharadun soli yengataatha adapuuti parangaila saavya kudustak
In one house they said my father is spending or lavishly and so they locked and gave the key to the grandchild
Adhukparagu pathiguna avangathivandhathangalallam palayya thangal
So you can see and they have taken the gold they were on all goals
Idakunduva inamadri lavithanga
I sold it in Madurai
Appapa varuva
Half on used to come
Arampodhalallav oralmulamav oru asari etatchi enakkatachingirindusi
So whenever I come and there the gold shop was in touch with me
Avanjachikvaruva
And he used to come to the church
Centravaidamala naavichikana pathavangailakuduthuva
And he will set accounts in center faith and give the money in his hands
Avavonukku overrate potte karakta konundu kura
So
Idhundu karatkoonadu idhupalayya thangal idhulavennesinjichi koranjirichi ellakleara soli kana budukuduk
And you check every gold and you check every carrot and you tell it is gold gold a new gold and give the correct money and submit in the hands
Omudiyavishuvaso annakoruvala nalakalai nekyapiyirukkun pakka
And your faith is better on the past times you check how it is present
Ah omudiyavishuvasavilayidha
And whether your goal is flourishing
Omudiyavishuvasathapathu kattar solonan nalathu
Looking at your goal the Lord must say it is good
Abhidham Bible choligare
That's what the Bible says
Omundraya sistithu vichthi kattarindusunara Avayal nalathindru kanda
And after creating everything and the Lord saw it was good
Bible namabible tamil bible abhile English bible vandhichavakalamayusariyil ebreye bible chavakalamay Adasenjitha rendhitiyukshunara ebhri nalathu nalathu Inhale Inniki yudergal chavakalamada unkennadu Yahova vandhu double time choliyukkaadu analai idhada moorthanadu
On Tuesday he said twice it is good it is good so in the Hebrews and they were telling and this Tuesday is a good day and because like Jehovah called it was good for twice
Onne enneyavathu avar solonu nalathu unmayum Abhina solaradu pathavane unmayum utthumana solamattari abhiso varadu nalathu abhin solidutha andhari kivasipadu
So after you looking unto you and me he will make a confession oh good a good and faithful servant
Abhina Bible choligare
That's what the Bible says
Nalathu unmayum utthumana uuliyakarane abhinam besaradu
And he was telling oh good and faithful servant
Onnamudiyadesathil namudiyajeevithilavere vilayikarana visuvasathapathu kattar solonu nalathu
And looking unto the goal which is coming out of the land we must see
Matthew 25:21
Twenty five twenty one of Matthew Anudiyajamana avanidoki nalathu utthamum unmayulla uuliyakarani
Ebhri paschicholdra varthendhu
What's the first word he confess
Huh nalathu
It's well done
Andhadesathin ponni abhidipadadu
And how the land country of the gold
Andhadesathin ponni abhidipadadu
The goal of country how it is it is good
Onudiyavishuvasathapathu kattar solonu nalathu
Looking at your faith he must say it is good
Ah yeah onudiyadhanthapon akkniilani kenu
Because your goal must stand in fire
Ennagamo 31:22
Thirty one twenty two of numbers
Akkniil nirkattakkapon
The goal which is able to stand in fire Akkini kinnirkattakkavigalagepon veli
Akkniilani kenu adavadu sawdanapovarattam parichchay vyadi pisas marano ivigallanee visuvasalani kenu
Abide in fire it means that you have to stand in times of sickness and kind of death and times of medical problems it kind of very personal in the life
Onravila desathinpon
One is a gold of land of Avila
Idhuvilichchalulavaru thanmaya kaanvik
And this shows the aspect or nature of it
Thovakkavundu muruyu undu
There is beginning and for this
Idhukvalachiyundu purunamundu
There is growth and perfection
Visuvasamanaadu kriyagalodukoda mayarchisaidu purunappadukradandru kaankurame
So we are knowing that and this faith is also getting exercise and is attaining the perfection
Redhavud
Secondly
Adavadu goldilulla Bible lulla gold ingeulla gold enakthiriyadu avavu ungalukthandhiriyav
I don't know about the gold of the little manner I say is about the Bible gold
Bible innor gold adutha gold
And there is a golden in the Bible
72:15
Avarpilaythirupar shebaavinpon avarkukkodukpadum avan nimitham idayvidamal jabumanappadum ennalum stotthrikappaduvar
Avarpilaythirupar shebaavinpon avarkukkodukpadu
And he shall live and to give him given the gold of Sheba
Avar ennadrikkum stotthrikappaduva
And he will be praised forever
Ah idhavarkukkaanikyaagukudukkara oru thanmaya kaanvik
This shows the nature of giving him as an offering
Enna 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 thangam kodukpadu
And what gold is given to him
Huh Solanga Huh Shebaavin thangam on avarkukkodukpadu
The gold of Sheba will be given to him
Rajavaku kaanikke
Offering to a king
Onre ningal purindu vallanu indhavishuvasajeevyo namadikima mukkupaduthukkaarno visuvasajeevyamgaradu oru kaanikke
One thing you must understand and why we are giving important to the life of faith is that and we are presenting this goal as a faith or not a faith
Namapanaum porulay ennalamo kattarkakaadu namakudukkaro adu paavamala
We are paying money and matters or many things to God and that is not sin
Anavishuvasajeevyamgaradu oru kaanikke
But life of faith is an offering
Adalathavishuvasathukken namaramu mukkayathukudukkara
So we are giving more importance for faith
Alkoradayalamaha
Or as a symbol for it
Matthew 2:11 Eesukki indhulakathle avar perandabodhu modalmodalkuduthakani keenna
What is the first offering which is given to Jesus when he was born in this earth
Manamoporulodresso ibhining oruplaya kodanay pathapona engavoviyay Oru skatvaidhupoviyay oru dressvaidhupoviyay Inna koncha uruthana rambaklosana relationavone edathupavanga Thangavasadiyavindusina veliyavaidhupava Inna topanaaluth thangatvaidhupava
When the child is born and you may offer them as a gifts like any kind of matters or materials or things or garments or dresses and if they precious and give them silver or any other things of gold
Matthew 2:11
Avargalandha vittukul privesithu pillayayum adinthayaayamariyalayum kandu saashtangamay vilindhu adipanindukundu thangal pokisanglai tirundhu ponneyum tuva varuk
Pokishangalitharundhu modalavidhida kodukkanga
Opening the treasures what they offered
Huh mattadala redhavud First eh nuhde first thangathalavacha
And first they present gold before him
Abhina enna arto
What does it mean
Neeparlavathukukpona nee onudikaanikke jeevyenna visuvasajeevyenna ondikaanikke
If you go to heaven and you have to present the goal the faith as offering to him
Marikumbodhu vaialandhavavanti vartheenadu namapettila enna lathuro
So when we die and what is the confession of tough of mark
Poradithai poradineen enna de Huh visuvasathikattukkole
And fought a good fight of faith I have kept my faith
Idhudam main
And this is important
Visuvasathakattukkalamay avangyavlaburiyalaranalo avavandhavandhey walvayavandhey uuliyen enna le oru kaanikke ayirka
If you are not able to keep your faith and you cannot accept or give an offering as life until you are alive
Sheba abhina enna arto
What does it mean of Sheba
Shebaanadhamma ministersukkala tamilla soluvanga manbhumigu abhimang
So they used to tell respected or giving reference to the ministers
Englishla manbhumigu kenadu tamilla manbhumigu Englishla eminanta Ah madhipukuriya
And they were reverent or giving some importance to the minister
Innor arto uridimuli abhinar
Another meaning is taking oath or giving uppers
Moadathartho yelumadangupooranav
And seven times of perfection
Adhathartho bali
And next meaning is sacrifice
Shebaangradukke arta oru nalanjatharuk
And there are four or five meanings for the word Sheba
Indhaseba rajasthari pakavandale avale bangaramana ponnavandhuvada
And the queen of Sheba when she came to visit and she was taking many kinds of goals
Appanamudiyavalkaila rajavapakavono abhina andhshaastrigal ponnakundavundhumari namudiyavishuvasajeevathadha namakkaanikyaagavukmunnalavikkamudiyu
So if you want to present an offering before him and love these big things given all things and we have to present gold before him
Indhaseba abhinabaliinarto
And Sheba means sacrifice
Ninga Bible padichiguna
When you read in the Bible
Visuvasamagiyabali abhinil
It is said the sacrifice of faith
Philippier 2:14
2:17 of Philippians
Visuvasajeevyo oru baliyana jeevyas
So life of faith is a sacrifice Meelum ungal visuvasamagiyapaliyin meelum
Visuvasamagiyabali
And it is sacrifice the service of your faith
Shebaavinponnunkradu baliyin jeevathikkaanvik
The gold of Sheba which shows the life of sacrifice
Edhin indhulakathalavandhu arpujinchinju visasathathradu marithorayelupunadu nalamukkayamala
And Jesus
Thannay jeevadarakirvadarabaliyaganinjaradu opukuttharada mukkayav
Jesus came to this world and he submitted himself he surrendered and sacrificed himself and that doesn't matter he submitted himself as a appreciation for us
Adubola
Likewise
Shebaangradu uridimuli
And Sheba means and it is oath
Ilavatal pradistha
Or it is consecration
Ilavatal teermaanam
Or there are decisions
Oru devanudiyapullay visuvasajeevathila visuvasathavittukudukkamattan pradistapananav
And child of God in the life of faith and they have to take a determination that they will not lose their faith in their life
Visuvasathalana nippanne nee opukudukkare adu oru kaanikke
Surrendering yourself that I will stand in faith and that is an offering
Adhupadhuthesolirukkaraadu andhasebaan chonna punidathin puranam abhinor varthar
And another meaning for Sheba means it is a perfection of the same thing
Adhala parishutthanamakallarkamithariyam
We all know that that is holiness
Ilavatal visuvasathin puranamunusolala
Or we can say it is a perfection of faith
Ah yelumadang abhin seven times abhin oru artaruk
And another meaning and there is seven times So we have to go on from perfection to perfection
Adhala namudiyavalkai
And that is our life
Andhavudavila desathinpon nalathu adu vilayakkoodiyadu adu mudichyadayakkoodiyavari visuvasajeevathikkaanvik
And first of all the gold of Avila which shows it fertile it multiplies it grows it shows the maturity and this shows the life of faith
Redhavudapon shebaavinpon
And second gold it is the gold of Sheba And this is the life of the life of Shabba is that and it is a reverence life and we have to submit ourselves as a life of sacrifice and praise and praise the gold and sacrifice as a faith. When we are in the own race and we have to keep our faith and we must end our race. And that is the reverence offering. And that is the offering of consecration. And that is the perfection of the same thing. So this way is a sacrifice. And this is what the Paul is telling that and I poured myself as a drink offering. A child of God who make himself as a sacrifice of nature. How many are able to offer ourselves as a drink offering? Many are not having the light to pour themselves as a drink offering. And he sees that I write myself by pouring myself into wine. And this is the next step of this gold. So we cannot use gold for everything. And it is having different niches for every gold. And the faith to attain the perfection. And the faith to offer as a sacrifice, it is the gold or faith of Shabba. A third gold. Second Chronicles chapter three verse six. And the gold is called as a perineum because he garnished the whole house with precious things of gold, the palace or it is called as a great sanctuary or dwelling place of tabernacle. And this is the nature of having. And life of faith is the thing which is able to garnish or adorn a servant of God or a believer. And we don't have any worldly adornment. But what are adornment? We have to adorn ourselves with faith and that is our life. And looking unto some, they were standing in faith and I feel my shame and how they beautifully are standing in faith. And sometimes and we may stumble never life but without thinking and they used to stand firmly. A life of faith is an adornment. And the perineum is trans from the word Sanskrit. And this is the goal to garnish the palace or the great thing. And this shines. You have kept gold in your house and after some days you can see after years, it got dim and you will give for polishing the gold. But this gold will never become dim. It never can dim. If the gold becomes dim, it changes from the nature of fine gold or pure gold. You can see lamentation, chapter four verse one and two. How was the goal become dim and how was the fine gold changed and it was poured out into the top of every street. The precious sons of Zion comparable to fine gold, now they were esteemed to earth than pictures. But what is the quality of this perineum gold and it shines forever, it never goes dim or black. It is fitted like that. You can read in the Bible that and the whole temple it was fitted with the gold, it was not become dim and it was giving light all the times. See how it would be. And Jesus said about the temple and the stones upon stones, it will be completely destroyed. It happened or not? After Christ, it took place for some years. What happened, you know? And they fired and burned it. So what they did and they fired and burned completely. So after firing, what happened? And all the gold and it was melted, it filled the gap in the stones. And speedily and they fired the whole place and all the gold was entered into the stones. Now they have to spoil the whole place and they have to take the gold and it was filled with the stones upon stones and they have to pick up every stones and this is how the prophecy of Jesus was fulfilled completely. In second Chronicles, chapter three verse eight, we can see and it is the holy sanctuary. And the whole place it was completely made out of the perineum gold and the whole. And what was the house? And he or the temple of God. First Corinthians chapter three, we can see that he or the temple of God. First Corinthians chapter three verse sixteen. You are the people of David. You are the people of David. You are the holy temple. And this temple shows your life. Temple shows your life. We have to construct this temple and preserve. And the faith in your life must never go dim. If one pastor is there and your faith will be good and will never go dim and next pastor comes, it goes dim, so the changes in character take place. What does it mean? Your faith must be turned into most holy faith. How your faith must be changed? It must be turned into most holy faith. And this is what we are reading the scripture as the law of the house. What is the law of the house? And the law of the house is that the holiness in the chamber or the limit thereof. Here we can see this faith and temple and it is holiness, it is coinciding together. Only when you understand well, you can understand the subject. Not only faith. Without faith and no one is impossible to be. Without which holiness and no man can see the Lord. So he was uniting love, faith and holiness. How your faith must be turned into. It must be turned into the faith of holiness. And there is no compromising in it. And you should not compromise in the laws and you should not engage together with this world or this with Satan or with these things of this world. When you are compromising with the sin and you cannot live a holy life. So you have to be very careful in this matter. The gold of perineum shines forever. It brightens and shines your life forever. Whatever comes, you will not stumble. Remember the past days that you were enlightened. Fourth gold. And there is gold of affair. So and we have touched the subject on Sunday. Ten thirteen of us kings. This world of affair which is mentioned in nine twenty eight of us kings. Second Chronicles, chapter eight verse eighteen is also telling about the gold of affair. And this gold is top but then this perineum gold. And it is telling greatest among all the gold is the gold of affair said by the Bible dictionary. And this is the lofty experience or the experience in summit. And affair means fatted. And another meaning is it was a wealth or riches or prosperity. Your faith must be turned fatted or prosper or it is so wealth and rich. Literally, you may not have garments or having good food or ninth things, you may be poor but in spiritual manner and you must be rich in faith and things. And Jesus became poor to make you and me rich. It doesn't matter that you have to purchase seven or eight cars or three cars to become rich. And this lofty gold for why it is given? And first I said about the land of gold of Avila, it shows the maturity of perfection in faith. And this faith works with things and it is attaining the perfection. The second faith a goal is the gold of Shabba. It shows that you surrender the life of faith then as offering to him. Third gold is the gold of perineum. And this shows when they are looking unto the every aspects or natures of the temple and complete holiness. Even it may be a tree and they will fit their goal that is pure gold or perineum gold. All the pillars and the lentils and all the pillars and tills and everything, it was fit completely with the fine gold. So even from the tilt, lentils and everything, it is fine of the perineum gold. So everything is made out of like this. And walls and all the beams. You can see in second Chronicles, chapter three verse eight. So you can see all the beams and walls and doors and posts and everything is with of. The nails which was fitted is made out of gold. And you can see in the ninth verse, the weight of the nails was fifty seconds of gold. And they overlight everything with gold. And all the words which happen all paired together with this perineum gold. So in your conversation, in all your desires and intents and thoughts and everything and your faith must proceed out. But for whom the gold of affair? So it doesn't matter for any worthy people, it belongs to the bride. So forty five verse nine. A believer or servant of God, they that desire to sit in the right hand of the throne of God, father, you have to put on the gold of affair. And you may have this ten pound of the eighth ounces gold. At the day of marriage, it will be becoming shining, it is lightning but after some day one month, it goes dim and the husband may stare at you. And it may be original gold but may be borrowed from the neighbor. After the marriage and they will get back. And this is world. And how the king's daughter, the queen is upon the right hand stand in the gold of affair. If you need to stand the right after God and you have to put on the gold of affair. And what does it mean for it? It is most holy faith. The gold of perineum is holy faith. Offering on sacrifice and this holy faith will engage together. That's what we are reading, Jude twenty, most holy faith. It is good that. It is good, it is becoming perfection. And now offering your life as a sacrifice, it is good. It is good that you are exercising the faith in every aspect of your life and preserving it without now going dim. But there is a coming. And there is a state to stand as a bride. And how your faith must be there. It must be the most holy faith. And I want to talk about this for two minutes. And what are the aspect of this most holy faith? How it is called? In Jude twenty, it is called as most holy faith. In this, in place, the word called most holy faith is used. In Jude three and how he speaks about his faith. And according to Ephesians, chapter one verse three in the he, the believers, the saints. And according to Ephesians, chapter one verse three in the he, the believers, the saints. And they the Torah in Christ Jesus and they are not.
Ebasiyavale krist esuukul viswasiyulai irukkara parishuttavangalukke elidukarada
Krist esuukul irukkara vanukke peyaranadu Avi viswasiyala, viswasiyulaya avyare, parishuttavangal And they that are in Christ Jesus and they are not believers and they are saints Adhalantha kristukul marikiravandhavaathie ubayukara So we are using the word and they that die in Christ Kristukulirukka parishuttavangalukke, kattharineseradu oru visay opuvikappattaparishuttamana The saints that are in Christ and he was calling that the faith which was once delivered unto them Adhu innorvadutla pakkamode When you see another word Velipadatal pathimoonu path Thirteen ten of Revelation
Sirepaddithukondubogaravan sirepattipovan, patthiithinaale kollugaravan, patthiithinaale kollapadavindum Parishuttavangaludhi porumayum viswasmam idilay vilangum
Parishuttavangaludhi viswasa And here the faith, faith of the saints Idhu innorvasana, velipadatal pathinangu panirande Fourteen twelve of Revelation
Devanudhi karpanigalayum esuvin maydulla viswasthayum kaathukollugaravangalagiya parishuttavangaludhi porumay idilay vilangum intukorina
Uh viswasthit kaathukollugaravangalagiya parishuttavangal And the saints that keep the faith of the language Aba viswasthinudiyapoorono ilavata andhah parishuttamana viswasa angaradu, adhu uru uchakattam Perfection of faith or most holy faith, it is the height, it is a peak level Idhu innorvadutla pakkamode We do see in another time Rendupedharu onnu ondre Second Peter chapter one verse one
Namudi devanum rechigaramai irukkara esu kristvinudhi needyal Engalipole arumayana viswasthit pettivarukalukke
Enna viswasthanamapettrukaro Huh? Arumayana viswasthit pettrav And we have obtained a precious faith Uh precious, velayera patha viswastha neepathtrukara, onkaila devam koduthukkara You have obtained on the Lord have delivered your precious faith in your hands Idhu yovan pesumbadu When John speaks about this Onnu yovan, ayindu nalai parkumbadu When we look onto first John, chapter five verse four Olagay jayikum viswasa And the word, the faith to overcome the world Onnu yovan, ayindu nal Five, four of us John
Devanall peripadillaam olagathay jayikum, namudi viswasmay olagathay jayikire jayam
Indha viswasa vandhu olagathay jayikara viswasa And this faith is a faith that overcome the world Olagakariyangalani neegaviswastha applypananu And you have to apply the faith in worldly matters Mudiyadu, narakkadu, kadekada, idhela naman naman dictionarylandhene nijirno, edhutram We have to take our mind, I cannot, I cannot do this, it is impossible Koodum, nadakkum, devan chayivar, viswasiyukaradu, adhana namadi life Possible, the Lord can do it, is enabled and this is faith Viswastha neengavandu exercisepananu You have to practice or exercise this faith Seva patha viswastha arikeyadu If possible, you have to confess the faith Seva patha viswastha kaathukunnu If needed, you have to keep the faith Avasiyapata viswasthukaavu poradam If possible or essential, you have to condemn for the faith Adha yendasunlali yappidi irukkuni neegapathukano And you may see and how the situations will be Where you have to condemn for the faith, you must condemn for the faith The place where to keep the faith, you must keep the faith And the place where you to stand for faith, you must stand for faith Adhu maathramala Not only that Yakkoorndu iruvathrendu namakellarukadari, viswasm puranapadukarade And we all know about James chapter two verse twenty eight and the faith is perfected
Viswasmavadi kriyaygalidu, kriyaygalodhi kooda mayarchisaidhe Kriyayalinaale viswasm puranapattadentukankira
Idhu daanachonnay exercisepananunshan And so this is what I'm telling that you must exercise the faith Uh oru viswasiyinaan oru time pakkamode Once I met a believer Rumbayalmeelara He was so poor Adhavudhu vedla kovichitukudumathodo velibeta And with the family and he got hatred and get out of the family Andhavayarakathila saapadukadekattalam paravallanukarana And with the zeal, even if he was not getting food and he was with some silence Once naan visitpanambodhi When I visited him Avi viswasinukuda enesilayanta Introducepalla He introduced not himself by telling that he was a believer Malay viswasiyapyayav vedla kovichitukudumathodo innorukavandutara Vandhadhatla chachiukavala, yengeyumavala, saapadukavali kadeyadu Ana oru trip naanavapay visitpantra, ana andhatla thannaviswasiyaviswasiyapyayangkaradu enesilava Introducepalla He was a believer, he was a believer son, he was not introduced himself, once I visited him And he had not good food and he was not even attended the church, but he introduced him not as a believer Naapona andhavedu vandhu aspetasla oru room And the room, I visited him, it was a room in asbesta seat Naapookaravadukanga bedsheet kadeyadu, paikadeyadu And there was no bedsheet or mat to sit there Next naanavasandhitapodu And when I visited him next time Naan transferai poyi, ethniyavarsangalich After transferring, after many years passed Andhasaabinadhiyaperyapanaakara viswasiyaverda And he was a rich believer in the church Alkaaduthavsha conventionani neegapathigana, padinutla churva chalavichu, muththa convention naanpathanukara In the coming convention, he said that I was spending eighteen lakhs of money for the convention And you was doing all the spendings for the convention Total convention naan chayiranjuli, padinutla churva chalavichu And he spent eighteen lakhs of money for all the expenses of the convention Avanavapathukupadu pesin I called, I visited him and speak to him Avi, abu kadajilasolra Enaiyavuvarga, naantha andhalan At last, he said, do you remember me? And I was the person Neegavandingene engavidukke, ana ennala, apavundasunlali neenay introducepanamudila You came to my house, but at that situation, you cannot, I cannot introduce you And I asked him, how you came here now Ayipronana chachiukavaramcha And he said that I started to go to church I kept the promises, I started to confess the faith Vaakuthathata arikesincha I, I confess the promises Idhu daanayenda vanduchinaya Indhadhlevalakutukidu vanduchin So this took me to this level Namapijero Are we doing like this Huh? Latta elamvavu, fastaveliyavu Aba idhukulayen, enna vada panamudiyadu Vaakuthathukavela illamupet We wake up lightly and go fast and there is no time to offer the promises You have to trust upon the promises Uh adha arikeyadu You must confess Adha vayatharamasol Open your mouth and see Visvasujolav, onakappadra kadekun solav Ni avanavotani yedukkano, kadindukalano The devil may say how you will get the promises and you must rebuke him, you must chase him out Ni isakanaal, ni avakuthathasandari If you are Isaac, you are the promiscuit of Isaac Ni onnu ismaavil And you are not Isma Anadavonde viswasanana rumbamukkeman Your faith is so important Adhutu oviswasan vyaadi padukudadu And nextly, your faith should not go sick Oviswasa yappodumai nalahelthyaruk And your faith must be always healthy Titthu onnu padinala One fourteen of Titus Titthu onnu padinala
Viswasthilaya arokiyamulla varigala irukkabadi, nee avargale kandipoy kadindukal
Yappidi irukkano, viswasthal yappidi irukkano How your faith should be Oviswasthukijora vandragudadu And there should not be fever of your faith Oviswasthajandis vandragudadu And John should not attack your faith Oviswasthukicancer vandragudadu Cancer should not attack your faith Uh abritanacholadu zerrana What I'm telling is right or wrong Uh Romer padinala onnapakkamode When we look at fourteen one of Romans
Viswasthil belavina mulavanaisayukolungal
Viswasthalav yappidi irukara Belavinamaa irukkara And how he is in faith and he is weak in faith Ana Abraham viswasthil yappidi illa, belavinamaa irukka villai But Abraham was not weak in faith Aba Abrahamdhi viswasthalav yaadi kadeyadu There is no sickness in the faith of Abraham Ana adhukpaulen nesolara And what Paul is telling about it Oru viswasthalasikka arkanna, vikka arkanna, avanavutradha, avanadevlopandunkara If one is sick and weak in faith, then you should not leave him, you must develop him Idhatta Romer padinala onnelai ipavasicham That's what we read in Romans chapter fourteen verse one Viswasthil belavinamunorali seyruthukolungal And you have to take them that are weak in faith Ana Romer nalila parkumbadu But you see Romans chapter four Pathamode Nineteen
Avan viswasthilaya belavinamaa irukkavillai
Viswasthalav English yappidi irukkade And he was not weak in faith Weak, viswasthalani vikka arkakudadu And you should not get weak in faith Adhalanatha viswasthalani arokiyamaa irukkabadi, avarlekadindukuladu nesol And so he was telling that rebuke him, that they must be healed and healthy in faith Kathodeyaparishuttnamathukamayumudavada May the gods holy name be glorified Naanam namdabasubjetamudikaro Now we are going to end our subject Namdaviswasm endathanmai ladu And what kind of nature is our faith Onadhey viswasa Your faith Parishuttavangalukka oru visay opuvikappattaviswasa It was the faith which was once delivered unto the saints Onkaila kodukappattaviswasa, arokiyamaano oru viswasa This faith which is delivered in your hands is there strong or it is healed faith Onkaila kodukappattaviswastha, nee puranadukkunduboy seyrakano The faith which was delivered in your hands, you must take on to perfection Onkaila kodukappattaviswasa, velayera pathadu, arumayana viswasa The faith which is given in your hands is a precious and it is so Onkaila kodukappattaviswasa, olagathay jayikara viswasa The faith which is delivered in your hands is the faith to overcome the world Uh onkaila kodukappattaviswasa, mahaparishuttamana The faith which was delivered in your hands is the most holy faith Oru velan neegipoy viswasthalai, ipayennesta standardlirukkigenu ungalkata diri And you know in which standard you are in faith Onakulirukkara viswasttha velayavay You have to fertile the faith which is anew Adhu velayattam Let it cultivate Oviswastha paththakatharinesolano Oru manishanu, oru, oraludhey viswastha paththakatharinesinchara Solanga, israelipulu naayipidi panla, yappidi pathaviswasthanaane, paakkavailantara And looking unto one man's faith and he said that I have never seen such a faith among the Israelites Yippidi israeli yavlovavirukkara, ana yippidi pathaviswasthanapakalangara And there are many in Israelites, but there is none found like him that is having faith Because his faith was so strong Onneyun enneyun paththakatharolana naladu Looking unto you and me, he must say, well done, good My son, my daughter, your faith is good Onadhey jeeviyav sebaavin ponnai marattam Let your faith be turned and do the life of the same So looking unto him, what we can present Namapakkamode, avrapakkamode, enathakudukuparo And what you are going to give when you look him Huh? Enathakudukavige Ningal oru vedukpombothulai, enathavayukavige So when you are going to this house, you will purchase something and go Ana neesuva pakkunana, nee onkaila sebaavin ponnavukano If you want to visit Jesus, you must have the life Ovalkada viswasa valke, adhalankaanike Your life is the life of a life that is sacrificed Uh nee punidhin puranathipetukal And you have to attain the perfection of the same nature And you have to pour your life to sacrifice in the fellowship of faith Uh onadhey jeevitha paruvayimin thangathinaale, nee prakashikichayvaya And you have to enlighten your life with the gold of per vein Nee oru parishutthalemaay maranu And you must be turned into the holy temple Uh onakorupramanamurukke You have a law in you Onde jeevithla yengeyum prakasham, mangiyayi neepookudadu And you must be illuminated in every parts of your life and you should never go dim Onadhey valkele, oru viswasm parishuttamaay marukaradu maathramala Mahaparishuttamana viswasmaim marav In your life, not only your life turn into holy faith, it must be turned into most holy faith Indha viswasa valke, oru chelippana valke This life of faith is a prosper life Uh andhacelippana mahaparishuttamana viswasthit, nee aniymoludhu, nee raajastraya marukara When you are getting this life of prosperity, the life of faith life and you will put on the gold of life Ningalay, ungalmanavatiyashindi chupanugala And consider yourself as a bride Yappidi irukku How it would be Orumakemyana nal namukkukaradu We have a glorious day Ellaarangangala imodu It is all close our eyes Raajastray opirin thangamanindavala, avarudhey valadu barsettila nirukkara, andhanaal nerungukaradu The queen is standing in the right hand of God by standing with opir gold and that day is nine Andavare, enadhey viswasttha velayavayega Lord, you make me to fertile this gold Indhadhey viswasthijeevame, naan kaanikyaago obukukare I offer my life of faith in a suffering Uliyamu, jeeviyamu, viswasthalaprakashiketo My life and my ministry, let it be enlightened in his life Oh, enadhey viswasmahaparishuttamana viswasmaim mari, naan umay sandhitumadhey valadu barsettila vandookaravai My faith must be turned into most holy faith when I see you and I must be able to sit on the right hand Enai velapaduthumendusolakarol, kangelimudimulangal padiyaduva Those who want to surrender, you close your eyes and bend your knees Indhaketta vasanangaludhey, andhjevan ipayaranganu The lines, the words that you hear now must be proceeded or must enter in you Ningal yavlovavtholvi, belavinam, butino, ilavata pudusipalasi, yedhan, yavlovatla vandhrunali, chari Ningal vasanathukusarandraagumoludhu, andhavasanathundey valamay arangiru Failure, weakness or any kind of things on me come in any state, but when you are hearing the word of God, the essence or life of word must have preceded you Nee vanchi jiina, oviswasa konjamarko, arpa viswasmarko, adha apriyay konjamakatha devlopanduva And you, when you are desiring and your faith may be so feeble faith, but when you are believing it and it will develop it Oru time varumboludhu, adhu puranathukavandru When one time comes and it will attain the perfection Oru time varumboludhu, viswasthukani poradaramchur When one time comes and you will condemn for the faith Oru time varumboludhu, oviswasm prakashikarambigam When one time comes, your faith will enlighten Oru time varumboludhu, onadhey valke, mahimey neerai, valiyadukappadu When one time comes and your life will be turned on to the glory Andavare, opirin thangamanindavala, naan umay sandhitavandamintu kerdungay You ask unto him, I have to visit you as the one who was endowed with the gold of affair Yippodade, namdaviswasthvalke kulu rakniyaranagato And right now, let the fight comes into the life of faith Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Jesus, 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 Jesus Thirabakadabakathirabakathirabak Hallelujah 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 Amen, amen, amen Pon mangipasumpunum, mari poyidude Parishutta stalakarkal, sidari poyidude Pon mangipasumpunum, mari poyidude Parishutta stalakarkal, sidari poyidude Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Thirupadu, innili pathu Thirupadu, innili pathu Pon mangipasumpunum, mari poyidude Parishutta stalakarkal, sidari poyidude Pon mangipasumpunum, mari poyidude Parishutta stalakarkal, sidari poyidude Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Thirupadu, innili pathu Thirupadu, innili pathu Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Thirupadu, innili pathu Thirupadu, innili pathu Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Visvasukkareyudhe, amputhi udhe Thirupadu, innili pathu Thirupadu, innili pathu Hallelujah, hallelujah Ibalabakadabakadabakathirabak Amen Kadrivarti gaistodramanuam Palathrapattaviswasthin anubavangalay, onrugudasindikevudhavisyabudinaale stodramanuam Overesunlaligalun namdaviswasm, valachadaindu, puranamadaindu Uh raajastrayaage, namaymatakudiyalavula, viswasthalavalachadaya, kattharnamekudhavisyamudiyay stodramanuam Esu varumboludhu, ovaduvaru opirin thangamanindavangala Andhenerivana mahaparishutta viswasthit jeevithla anubavitha, aniavithavangala, avaresandhitavudhavisyamudiyay stodramanuam Mahaparishuttavaviswasmulalaisayukavaru varugara, varukkay stodramanuam Andhanaalakandre ellari ayathapadhumudiyay stodramanuam